To all the members of the public who are here tonight, I'll call the Brandon Select Board to order. It's September 14th, 7 o'clock. Is there a motion regarding the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Bailey moves to approve, and there's a second from Mr. Wyman.
Yeah.
Why don't we?
Thanks.
I would suggest we add Bill Moore's municipal planning grant to the agenda.
Your pleasure.
Okay, so there's a resolution under consideration for municipal planning grant. Where do you want to put that, Mr. Giles?
Um, how about after the town manager's report?
Okay, 3A. And then I was asked by the town manager to add an item to consider waiving interest and penalties on taxes during COVID-19. Can that be 3B?
Sure.
Anything else to add to the agenda? If not, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
No objections? That's unanimous. Item 2, approval of the minutes of August 24th. They've been submitted and circulated. Does anyone notice any errors or omissions in the minutes as presented?
Hope to approve.
Motion from Mr. Coolidge to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second from Mr. Wyman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That's unanimous. Item 3, the town manager's report, Mr. Atherton.
I just want to spin around here. This is my report for the weeks of August 31st and September 7th. Segment 6, repairs to the concrete pier underneath the town office have started. There was some scouring at the base that will be prepped and concrete will be added to fill the voids, which actually happened today. So that's moving along. We're still waiting for steel to show up. So once the steel beams come in, they'll be put in place. Park Street granite curbing has been installed. The second concrete pour for the bio swell curbing started today. They did three of them today. They'll have them finished probably by Wednesday this week. I was able to get the Class 1 highway paving and line striping that was originally scheduled for spring of '21 to be completed this year. This will complete the Park Street project 100% and actually in just a few weeks. Other happenings. The car charger installation station started on September 10th in Conant Square parking lot. This was funded by the grant I received last year. The construction of the townhouse sidewalk roof also started last week. That's moving along. And I had a meeting with Devon Neri from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to conduct a site visit and start the application process for a bike and ped grant to rebuild sidewalks on Union Streets on Union Street from Hanaford's to the rail crossing. So hopefully more to come on that. Rec news. Soccer flag football and cheer registration has opened up. We have folks signing up with the understanding that mask use is mandatory for all participants, coaches and spectators, as per the guidance from the state. The past weekend, the rec department partnered with Brandon Music from the Barn Opera Company to host a socially distant outdoor opera at Esterbrook Park. It was titled "The Marriage of Figaro," and it was enjoyed by all who were clamored for arts opportunities in this COVID-19 world. And coming soon, we're going to see kids cornhole and kickball. And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Any questions for the town manager from the board? Start with those in the room with Mr. Atherton, Ms. Coolidge, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Wyman?
Nothing.
Mr. Bailey on the phone?
Uh, nothing.
Mr. Giles?
No.
I have no questions. Any questions for the town manager from the public present tonight?
Yes, I have a question. This is Brent Buehler.
Hi, Brent.
Good evening, everybody. Are the plans for the roof for the town hall? I couldn't find them online. Are they anywhere to be viewed?
Yeah, it's a one-page plan. It's here in the town office. I have a file on it.
Oh, okay. Does it include the drainage that was added to the project?
Well, there'll be drainage in it from the back of the structure heading down the side of the sidewalk underneath the ground.
Yeah, that's what I was curious about because they've already put the posts in and everything. And I hadn't seen any drainage being installed, so.
Yep, they're doing something there, Brent. I'm not the contractor, so I'm not sure how they're doing it.
Okay, that's on the plans you have, is what you're saying.
Uh, yeah, it should be. It's only one, it's a one-page plan, so I can show you what we've got, yep.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Brent. Other questions for the town manager or comments for the town manager? There's always public comment and participation appropriate at any agenda item. So we'll move on from the town manager's report. We'll take care of these two additions that we added on tonight. We have a municipal planning grant that Mr. Moore has been working on. And since he's here, could we ask him to introduce that and what he would like the board to consider?
Thank you, Seth. Yeah, this is Bill Moore, as you can see as I'm talking. So our friends at the regional, Rutland Regional Planning Commission are putting together this consortium of towns to sponsor this municipal planning grant. And directly from their lips to my ears, to your ears, they're proposing a municipal planning grant consortium application of support, the scoping and development of the interactive map of the Rutland region, which would organize information and data on trails, biking and hiking, downtown village centers, historical points of interest, museum, art studios, and possibly more as the scoping work would determine. The greater end goal being to actively support tourism within the region. I just feel like this is a good thing for the town to sign on if you guys would be so interested. We require nothing in the way of heavy lifting for us, saving, signing this resolution and having the planning commission commissioner chair, Michael Shank, who's going to sign the resolution as well. And, you know, at the end, the end result for us would be an interactive map that we could link on our webpage or have its own house or both. But, you know, free mapping for us and doesn't require much in the way of work.
Mr. Giles?
Yeah, Bill. I was just looking at this. Looks great. I just noticed under "Be it resolved," number one, it says that the grant program includes a commitment to match funds. And I'm wondering what we're agreeing to, what kind of matching funds we're agreeing to in this.
We're not agreeing to any matching funds whatsoever. We don't agree to match funds because there's not, the rollout for us is, there's no commitment financially at all from my good friend Amanda.
What does that number one mean when it says that the legislative body of this municipality enters into and agrees to the requirements and obligations of this grant program, including a commitment to match funds?
I would believe, I would believe that my good friend Amanda O'Connor at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission wouldn't say we're wrong in that if there's any sort of matching funds, it would be coming from Rutland Regional Planning Commission to provide that, those funds, and not from us. You know, we do not, this is not a commitment financially for us. And I can call her up and know her, and she, I stepped in her stead, but I can give her a call to, if you'd like, to have her be on this call to.
I wonder, Bill, is that addressed in the first item on the second page? Where it talks about consortia, because you've referred to this as a consortium, where it says the Regional Planning Commission will serve as the agent?
Yes.
So if there's a grant that requires a match, our RPC would be providing the match, is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Other discussion? Questions?
It sure would be nice if the document, can we edit this document at all? Or put a note in that says that, you know, the legislative body of this municipality does not, you know, commit to matching funds?
I would say that, I mean, like, I would say that that would be fine. I mean, certainly that'd be, it's your resolution. I mean, this is, you know, suggested language. We can change it as we need. It's just a, you know, starting point, certainly.
I mean, I'm not even sure, I, that we might want to match funds. I mean, I guess I'm just thinking about the wording of this form that we're about to sign.
Well, I think, Tim, that, you know, if a grant comes up and it appears to me from both the top statement on the second page and the bottom statement on the second page, that the Regional Planning Commission is going to cover it. But if by some weird chance there was an exceptional grant or some exceptional amount of money provided that required a match, I think if we just chose not to match it, we just wouldn't get the grant, kind of thing, right? I mean, I don't think, like, we're saying, if we get awarded a grant, we're going to make the match regardless of how much it is.
Okay.
That's how I would look at it. Maybe I'm wrong.
Now, this is the same resolution that we do on any of these grants that come through regional planning. I'm trying, we just did one not that long ago for something else. And I can't, oh, I know what it was for. It was for the grant for the parking area down behind the mobile. We did the same thing, because I had Michael Shank sign that one as well.
Great. Further comments or discussion? Questions? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to go along, go forward with the grant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Wyman and a second by Mr. Coolidge to proceed to adopt the municipal resolution for the municipal planning grant with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, as described by Mr. Moore. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say no, that was unanimous. Item 3B is, Mr. Atherton asked for an item to consider waiving interest and penalties on taxes and sewer. Dave, do you just want to do taxes during the select board meeting and sewer during the sewer commissioners' meeting? Or do you want one statement now?
Well, I don't know. You know, we've tossed this around a little bit since COVID-19 started in March. And Luanne and Sue have asked me about it a couple times. You know, I think we need to come up with, it doesn't, I mean, you guys can do one at each meeting, but I think we need to say yea or nay on if the town is going to have accounts accrue interest from, you know, the start of COVID, which is what, March, whatever, until it's done.
So did we vote once already, but it was for the previous fiscal year?
I don't think we moved forward with any of it. We had discussed that we were going to see where delinquent taxes landed. And we were only about $25,000 different from what last year's was for delinquent taxes. The big one right now is the water and sewer. That's the one that folks seem to be asking a lot on for interest on the sewer account. But we are, you know, interest is accruing on any real estate right now, too. So, like I said, I know we've talked about it a couple times. And the board should probably make a decision here on whether we're going to accrue, let interest accrue on accounts or not through COVID. That doesn't wipe out any of what there was, you know, prior to March of 2020. It would just be for, you know, if you wanted to do, like a certain.
That we do it for the duration of the state of emergency.
Okay.
Like, that way, it's not really our decision to choose an arbitrary date. It's choosing what the governor has decided. Can we start and end when the Vermont State of Emergency began and end it when it will end?
I'm sure you could. I mean, you guys could do whatever you want with it. That seems like a logical solution.
I would move that the town waive interest and penalties on property taxes for the duration of the declared state of emergency related to COVID-19.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Is there discussion? I have a little discussion. Dave, we account in the budget that we adopted last March. We plan on some income for interest slash penalties. So it's going to put us a little bit behind in terms of forecast revenue to do this. It's probably still the right thing to do. But when we start planning next year's budget, which will be within a couple of months, we usually get working on that, we probably want to consider the propriety of forecasting interest and penalty revenue this time. Maybe we shouldn't.
Yeah, I would say that that revenue line should be much smaller in our budgeting season than it has been. And then we see where the difference is.
Okay. Any further discussion? Questions? Comments? Ready to vote? All in favor of waiving interest and penalties on property taxes during the declared state of emergency, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, that's unanimous. Item 4, public comment and participation. Start with the select board. Mr. Giles, anything tonight?
No.
I have nothing. Mr. Wyman?
Nothing.
Mr. Bailey?
I was only wondering briefly if, driving around town, things look so nice, yet we still see some places where the grass is not being mowed between the sidewalks and the road on a couple places. Is our town crew going to be doing the spots in front of houses that are not mowing it? Are we going to be asking the people that own the houses to mow it? Or what's the process there? Because it's a shame to have such, a few of them make it look so crappy.
So it's not our property, Doug. It is the landowner's property. It's definitely gotten better in the last week. I did, however, ask Josh to mow a couple spots on Franklin Street that were rental properties that are kind of known for not mowing. The minute he mowed it, they had a bunch of, a big free pile out where it was mowed. So, you know, we don't have an ordinance against the height of the grass or anything. And we can't really force people to mow their lawns, unfortunately. So I don't, I don't know.
I understand. I just kind of wondered if there's, as they say, something that we're going to try to, you know, I don't know if some people just don't know that it's time for them to start mowing again or whatever. But it was noticeable driving around town.
Well, we've, we only mow the sections that are owned by the town, you know, like in the downtown area or like we own a portion in front of the air share building and, you know, the parks. But everything else is on the landowner. It's their property, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for answering my question.
Thanks, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Coolidge, anything? Any members of the public with public comment and participation? This would be items not on the agenda.
Yes, this is Brent Buehler again. In regards to the grass, I, a lot of folks, property owners, have expressed dismay at the quality, of course, of the seed that was put down. So that may have something to do with their reluctance to care for it.
So Casella's actually started reseeding lawns last week. As you know, we had a dry season and weeds grow really good and it's dry and not grass. So things are starting to come back now. But, yeah, they started reseeding last week. So at some point, it's got to be on the landowner to start maintaining their lawn. And it shouldn't be left up to the town to pull weeds and everything out of their yard, so. Not everyone's looks as nice as yours, Brent.
Well, thank you. But they have expressed some dismay to me. So I'm just passing it along that that could be some of their reluctance.
Yeah.
Dave, along those lines, you had mentioned some possible reseeding of the parks or some of the other areas that were seeded last time. Is that still a thing?
Yeah, like I said, they started reseeding stuff last week, so.
So the town owned properties as well, not just?
Yeah, wherever there were spots with weeds and not, and the grass wasn't grown while they're hitting them all again.
Very good. Great. Other public comment tonight? Members of the public with items they'd like to talk about that don't appear on the agenda? Okay, not seeing any takers, but again, you can always chime in during individual agenda items. We'll move on to item 5, an update to the personnel policy. Looks like there's some, Dave, would it be correct to say that this is some technical changes that are being made, but they're not substantively changing what the town is doing with its employees?
That is a great way to say it, and that's exactly what it is. Some of the, well, actually, all these changes were prompted by VEMR's, that they just wanted certain wording in the personnel policy to keep them happy. So that is what the proposal is for the update. Not, yeah, nothing, nothing's changing percentage-wise or claims-wise or payout-wise. It's just, it's just adding more words.
What's the pleasure of the board on the proposed technical slash language changes requested by VEMR's?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the changes.
Is there a second?
Sure, I will.
Motion from Mr. Wyman and a second from Mr. Coolidge to go ahead and update the personnel policy with some of these language changes that VEMR's, with all the language changes that VEMR's has requested. Is there discussion? If not, ready to vote? All in favor of adopting the proposed changes to the personnel policy, say aye.
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 That was unanimous. Great. Item 6, the green fleet policy discussion. There's nothing in the packet that was, this is a request item from one of the selectmen, I believe.
Sort of. It actually came out of a, sorry, guys. It came out of a, Tim and I had had some email conversation about the green fleet policies and what he was looking for for information. He had sent a spreadsheet to me that was looking for vehicles and data acquired and VIN numbers and everything. And I just, I thought it would be better that this be discussed at the next select board meeting because honestly, I didn't feel like this was a good time to spend, for me to spend doing, gathering this information. And just wondering what we're trying to get out of this as well. And I think Tracy might have, might want to say something on this as well, too. So I'm going to flip you over again.
Yeah, no, I can see. No, I guess I was wondering what we're trying to get out of this myself, I guess. That was my big thing. Just had a chance to briefly, briefly going through the policy and I just wondered what we are trying to get out of it.
Shall I jump in here and kind of share where we've gotten to? As you know, we passed this green fleet policy a while back. And when we passed it, I kind of knew it was going to be a little bit of a lift to get the first set of data together. And so I offered to help. And Dave, you know, generously sent me a spreadsheet that apparently he already maintains on gas usage and fuel usage on all the equipment in the town. And I spent probably, you know, six or eight hours researching kind of how to get the CO emissions information out of fuel usage. And I found a template that they were using in Thetford. And I, it was quite a bit more elaborate than what I thought we wanted. So I spent some time paring it down. And I finally got the data part of putting in fuel usage and mileage and this kind of thing to where it probably is going to take about an hour once a year to use data that already exists in the town. And I mean, the cool thing here is, you know, I, once I figured out how to do this, I asked Dave if I could get the previous years. And, you know, Elaine, in 10 minutes, sent me the last three years worth of data. And I dropped that into the spreadsheet. So now we have some perspective on kind of our usage over time. And the last piece, which I, which I knew was going to be challenging, is this attached to the spreadsheet and, of course, part of the policy. It calls for an inventory of the vehicles and equipment that the town owns. And that's what Dave's referring to, is that it's looking for, you know, year purchased model. Just, it's a modest list, but it is, it's not something that the data is right there. And when I wrote to Dave, I, realizing this was going to be a little bit of a challenge, I offered to try to help, you know, gather some of this, because this is a one-time thing. This is not going to be something we have to do every year. You know, once we have this data, it's going to be, you know, easier to just add and delete from it as we buy and sell equipment. It's not going to be a heavy lift every year. And I also suggested that this is not something that has to be complete at first. It's the kind of thing we could, you know, build on as we, as we get the data. Things like, you know, a list of the vehicles we own and the models and the years and this kind of thing. And so that's, I think what we're talking about here is the final stage of data acquisition for me to complete this first round of green fleet policy implementation. And after this, I'm assuming as the policy states that, you know, once a year, Dave will have one of his staff drop in the numbers from their gas usage, their fuel usage spreadsheet they already have. And then it'll pop out the numbers for our CO2 emissions as my spreadsheet's designed. Does that answer some of the questions?
Yeah, yes. Just, I guess I'm, yeah.
Maybe your bigger question, Tracy, was, why are we doing this? You know?
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, I sense that. And so when I proposed this policy, I was appreciating the foresight of this Thetford policy, which is where I found it, at trying to be proactive about our use of fuel and our CO2 emissions going through time. And nothing in this is binding. I think this is supposed to be a policymaker's tool. So we have accurate numbers and we can kind of say definitively, this is how much we're using. This is how much we used last year. And hopefully, over time, we'll diminish our use of fossil fuels in a healthy way, which will save the town money. It'll be responsible environmentally and it'll meet some of the goals of the state, which is happening around us. And we're trying to, this policy is designed to help us fit into those larger goals.
Yeah, okay, but I just, I guess I don't see us putting it into our use of fossil fuels, but.
Right.
I guess that answered what I had for questions at this point.
Okay.
Other discussion?
Can I chime in?
Of course.
Chair, I certainly don't expect that it's going to result in us not using fossil fuel. But I do think it shows that if we get a handle on the things that we do own, which is what I thought the intent was, and what type of fuels and what they were burning, if when we were replacing these things, we could look at other, at least we'll be looking at options mindful of that. And I think, I remember it came up to a point when we were even talking about the possibility. And I say that, you know, boldly, possibility of having an electric police car or something else. And that, you know, knowing what we have was the first starting point. And I agree, I think, with what Tim's saying, was knowing that the first time to get the list started was going to be the pain in the ass. And that we could get that done and then work from it. It's only a one-time thing where it should, should really be, take time. And I'm not sure it has to be Dave's time. I'm not sure why someone like Elaine wouldn't have that information in her computer or something that the information could be retrieved and used. And feel that, you know, we should give it a try. I mean, we were all in favor of it just a few months ago, and we haven't let it get off the ground yet. So that's where I'm at.
The only, the only concern I have with this is Elaine already keeps track of what our fuel usage is and everything. So I don't know why we would have to recreate another spreadsheet to get the. So I don't know why we would have to recreate another spreadsheet to get the same outcome.
Actually, what she keeps is designed to monitor fuel usage, like in, in gas and in dollars and cents. And what this does is, what my spreadsheet does is take a summary of that data, which as I said, is, is quickly ascertained now that I've made it easy. And, and it produces a CO2 emissions per equipment. So you now have the ability to weigh which equipment is, is contributing CO2. And, and then, then when it comes time to buy new equipment, we'll have a per equipment comparison of, this is why it might be good to, you know, get some new piece of equipment with better energy efficiency.
So Tim, my, my only concern with that is, is within the highway department. And Sean and I have had quite a few conversations about this on what we would even replace would say a battery operated, you know, chainsaw or whatever. Me being one who uses that stuff at home, it's great for me around my house and my wife's business. But most of the time, when, when the crew or we're out with chainsaws and everything else, it's one in the morning because there's been a storm. And I don't think we're all going to think about charging batteries at that point. So that's my concern is I don't see where that's going to help us in the highway department, which is definitely our highest fuel usage. It's sort of, you know, even with plowing, I mean, we're never going to, the only way we could cut down emissions on plowing would be to have less roads. And that's not going to happen for us. I mean, we just, we have a lot of road to plow. And I, I, I don't know, I don't know how it would be effective with us in that department, I guess.
Yeah, I, as I say, nothing in the Green Fleet policy binds us in any way to force purchasing decisions. I think what it does is it gives us useful data to make good choices in the future. And, and as I say, because I've set this up, it, it should be a really small investment of time on a yearly basis. It's just this very first hurdle. I, I, when I wrote to you, Dave, I, I had asked if it was possible for, you know, for me to be helpful in any way in gathering this first chunk of data. You know, would it be possible for me to, you know, email the departments and ask them just for a, a list of the equipment information that I need? Would, would that be helpful to minimize your time in this?
I guess. I don't know how much it would minimize their time. It might be worth stopping down there instead and collecting.
I'd be happy to do that. I mean, it basically is dropping by the police department and trying to get a list of the vehicles and then dropping into the highway department. And again, getting a list of mostly vehicles and some equipment.
So we should have like vehicle VINs and everything here with insurance and, you know, Jack or Elaine would have all that because we have this, we have to send it to the league anyway every year and then they send us what we need. So, but as far as equipment and stuff, I think that would be more of a, kind of a hands-on way to get what you're looking for.
Okay, well, if I have your permission, I'd be happy to do that to get us over the hurdle issue.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, so we voted a policy in December that took effect in January. And we've discussed it now in September. Is there any action required or desired? I kind of think not. Okay, so we'll proceed with the policy as it was adopted and see how it goes.
And, and I guess I would add, I'll, I'll provide a, a Green Fleet report for the next select board meeting. Because by then I'll have the fiscal year data finished. Well, I already have the fiscal year data finished and I'll have been able to gather the equipment information by then.
I think, you know, Green Fleet or not, it probably is not a bad management idea for the town just to have an inventory of its equipment anyway. So, you know, we'll have, we'll get that out of it if that's something that you're going to be collecting.
So, I mean, we do have that, you know, we have the inventory of what we own. We, we deal with it every year, so. Anyway.
Okay, item seven is the two warrants. Want to take them together or separately?
Together.
Is that a motion to approve them?
Yeah, it's almost.
Mr. Wyman moves approval. Is there a second?
Sure.
Second from Mr. Coolidge. Any questions on any of the bills? Mr. Bailey often does. Mr. Bailey, anything tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Two brief questions. One on page two. Carol, Bo, you know, and Pell, the second bill for 471 saying legal services miscellaneous. Would, would, just wondering what that would include. Would any of that be the trust, any, any of the prep work for the sale of the DIN property that we would be getting back at the sale? Or is that relating to the property selling policy? What was that bill for?
Well, these are random ones. I can tell you, we've got animal control ordinance. We've got mobile home abandonment. And that's it. So animal control ordinance took up most of that.
Okay. And then on page five, the Vermont tennis court surface, $5,533 for court maintenance up in Seminary Hill. Is that the seal or protective basketball court up there or what? I don't ever remember discussing any, you know, any major expense up there. That's why I'm asking.
Well, it wasn't really major. I mean, we had a, we had a sewer break up there. We had to dig a hole into the court. So in order to redo it, that's what happened. But I believe Bill might have some more input on that, too, because I think we have some other funding options that are going to cover that.
Yeah, this is Bill. The, when we were awarded the municipal recreation grant last winter, the end of December, for $10,000 as part of our repairs up at Seminary Hill with the fencing. Oh, we have a, we had a match responsibility, which was part of the budget. So this is $5,500 towards that $10,000 match for the rest of the fencing. And the rest of the work will be done around other fencing at the north, at the south end of the park. It was part of our grant.
Okay, great. We had offsetting, offsetting on the other side that we don't get to see. So perfect. Are we still, are we still putting that playground up at that, that, that park or not?
That is something that's being, that's currently being batted around. We're going to take some elements out of that playground and put them somewhere because at this point, I, I don't want to, I don't want to have been a, a lost investment. But that, that playground weighs heavy.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to see it either there or Esterbrook Field, you know, somewhere.
It will go, it will go up to Seminary Hill, like the, the elements that we'll be pulling out of that, that will be great for the outside will be put up at Seminary Hill.
Yep, okay, thanks, Bill. And that's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Other questions on the bills that we have before us tonight? If not, are we ready to approve them? There's a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of the two warrants, say aye. Aye, that was unanimous. Okay, so there's an executive session scheduled, but what we'll do is recess the select board at 7:39. And we're going to have the Board of Sewer Commissioners meet and then the Board of Liquor Control Commissioners meet. And then the select board will come back and do that executive session, okay? So we're at recess as the select board and I'll call the Brandon Board of Sewer Commissioners to order at 7:39. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion.
Mr. Coolidge moves adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Giles. Any changes to be made?
Mister Chair, can we also add the interest and penalty thing onto this meeting as well?
Absolutely. Good idea. So when we do it to, to B, okay, consider waiving interest and penalties on sewer charges. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, that was unanimous. Approval of the minutes of August 10th?
Almost.
Mr. Wyman moves to approve. Second? Second, Mr. Coolidge. Any errors or omissions in the minutes of August 10th? If not, all in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted, say aye. Opposed, say no. Abstentions? None. Okay, very good. Item 2B, is there a motion to waive interest and penalties on sewer fees for the duration of the declared state of emergency related to COVID-19?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Giles makes the motion. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second from Mr. Wyman. Any discussion? Same rationale as on the property taxes. All in favor of waiving those penalties during this declared state of emergency, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? That's unanimous. The ayes have it. Item three, discussion on second water meters.
So another thing that's come up now that we're doing the joint water and sewer billing is there are some properties that have second water meter that Ray ends up doing a deduct if they're watering their gardens or whatever things. I don't think there's that many left. I was just asked to bring this up to the sewer commissioners to see what their take was on it. If we want to continue to let folks install a second meter. They do have a second meter fee when they do it. So, you know, we bill it out for that meter as well. But just another one where we're looking for some clarification on as to how we want to move forward, whether if we want to continue to let folks install second meters or how we, how we go forward with that.
Great, thanks, Mr. Atherton. What's the pleasure of the board regarding second meters?
So the discussion or you're looking for a motion?
I'm looking for discussion.
Yeah, discussion. I, I, I think, you know, the theory of the sewer is that it's a pay for usage. And that if people want to get a second meter and the meter is clearly not going into the sewer, then, then it's a non-sewered meter. And, and I, I think that's a clean, consistent, fair policy. And, and I think there should be the availability of people getting second meters if they want to do that.
I would agree.
I also agree. I don't necessarily think that we, the select board, would have any kind of input as to whether second meters were available or not. I think that's kind of entirely from the fire district, wouldn't it be? It's a water meter.
The only, the only thing Seth is that, is why it's come, I wanted to bring it to you guys is that our sewer bill is based on the water meter read. So if there was a meter that was deducting usage from a water, you know, from someone's water account, that would, that would affect a sewer bill. So just throwing that out there.
I recognize that it would, but I, I think that Tim has the clear, you know, analysis, which is if we're truly talking about water that's never going through our wastewater system and sewer usage is really a pay-by-usage kind of fee, then I, I don't see that it's really harming us to not collect a sewer fee for water that never went into the sewer.
Okay, I'm just looking for some direction on it. The, the questions come up a lot and we haven't really had something set in stone on how the town feels about that, so.
Only, only a few of us have spoken. Anybody else have some input on it or different thoughts? Tim, did you have something additional you wanted to?
Well, I, I was just going to kind of continue along that line to suggest that even though we don't, we're not the water department. I mean, the water department has to put in water tap and a water meter. But I think it is, for the public good, it needs to have a fairness to it, which means there needs to be a fair access to the option of getting a second meter. And I think that's where weighing in in some kind of public way is helpful. I mean, this is, I, I appreciate Dave bringing this up because I think that my, my sense of the fairness piece is that it can't be the feeling that some people are benefiting from this and other people aren't because of some kind of who determines who gets the second meter. And, and I, I would just encourage us, maybe, maybe I'll write a letter to the Prudential Board as a taxpayer, just to encourage them to, to allow second meters for people that want to pay to get second meters as long as they're verifying that it's not going into the sewer.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the second meter has associated flat fees with it, just like the first meter. And the fire district has some debt service and so forth. And it's not an insignificant amount compared to what you pay for the actual usage. So I think people will make their own decisions. But, you know, I, I do think that the Prudential Board can hear from us that we don't really have an objection to it. But I think that, you know, they'll have to make their decisions about whether it's desirable from their point of view and how accessible it should be. You know, it, it should be accessible to everybody who's willing to pay for it. Anything else we need to do on that one? If not, there is a request, number four, request from the American Legion to consider a one to three-year reprieve on town water and sewer bills. And so for our discussion, it's just the sewer bill. And then Dave has provided some historical usage and billing fees for the Legion and the associated commercial property that belongs to the Legion. Dave, did you want to talk some more about what, what numbers you gave us or?
Um, sure, I mean, I could talk a little bit more about what else has taken place since this was sent. Bill, I, I asked Bill to reach out to Aaron Tucker at the Legion to see what they'd done for any, any grants through the state or feds, you know, COVID-related. And reached out to Stephanie Jerome to have her and, and Aaron maybe sit down and see what else they could apply for, too. This, I think there's some more options coming up for some of these businesses that they could certainly take advantage of and go from there. Yeah, as far as the, the bills that I sent you, I, as you know, they own the building that the gun shops in, too. So I, I, I would assume that this would just be for the Legion itself, that they're looking for, not the gun shop. They're not in arrears on anything, so.
Tim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious if there's an abatement process. Because I mean, when it comes to taxes, there's a Board of Civil Authorities, there's the abatement process, and then there's rules that go into determining whether we can abate, you know, taxes.
I think the interesting thing is there, is they're looking for abatement into the future, basically, which, not really sure how that works, which is why I suggested that, you know, we reach out to them and see what they could do to apply for some relief from the state or the feds on a grant level, so.
Have we abated anybody's sewer bills in the past?
Yes, but always, always past bills.
Right.
And always based on the same criteria that apply for property tax abatement.
And that comes through the sewer board, so I mean.
No, no, oh, I don't mean we, I mean the Board of Civil Authority.
That's what I was getting to. I, I'm just concerned.
Yeah, this doesn't really belong here.
I wasn't sure, but I think that's where I was going, right.
So, I mean, I, I'll disclose, I'm a member of the Sons of the Legion, right? And I did tell them when they had a meeting and mentioned this. I said, this really is probably not the right venue and I don't think that it's really going to be appropriate for us to do this. I encouraged them to go through ACCD and the Department of Taxes and try to get one of those, you know, 10% of last year's gross revenue type things. I think they're working on it. They do provide a lot of service to the town, as they say in the letter here. They do provide a lot of service to the town, as they say in the letter here. But as Dave pointed out with the bills that he sent, I mean, we're not talking about $300. We're talking about very, very small money here. And when I say not about $300, I mean, we're talking about less than that amount of money. I don't think it's gonna make material difference to them, and I don't think that we really have the authority to do it. So I would suggest that we respectfully take no action on this. And I say that knowing that Dave and Bill have advised them of different avenues that they can pursue, both for getting additional revenue and for going to the Board of Abatement, if this does become a problem where they can't actually make the payment for the sewer bill.
And we'll certainly assist them and follow up with what can be done with the state and keep Stephanie involved with it as well.
Anything else to be said on this? If not, we'll go ahead and move on. Item five is to adjourn, is there a motion?
There are motions.
A motion from Mr. Coolidge, is there a second from Mr. Wyman? So the Sewer Commissioners are ready to vote on adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. It's 7:51, Sewer Commissioners are adjourned. I'll call to order the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners. Is there a motion on this agenda?
Almost.
Mr. Wyman moves to approve, is there a second?
Yep.
Second from Mr. Coolidge, any changes on this one? If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Item two, approval of the minutes of August 24th?
Motion to approve those.
Mr. Coolidge, second from Mr. Wyman, any errors or omissions? None heard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no, that's unanimous. Item three, a third-class liquor license for Foley's Taco and Bean. Dave, did you get my inquiry about this?
Yeah, about 10 minutes ago. So, there is this, I'm going through this application right now, and there actually is a form here, and I'm not up on the liquor stuffs as much as Sue would be, so. But it does have, like, the place of birth and everything on it, and they spelled it out that, you know, one was born in South Africa and one in Canada, so I don't know what.
No, I see that on the form, the question is, on the back of the front page, you know, when they check off they're citizens, if, then they're basically saying they're naturalized, and they have to provide the naturalization. And it's not here, and that's okay with me, as long as it's with Sue.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't, I could send her a text right now and see if she has it. Might take a minute.
I'm not, I'm not gonna, you know, hold this up on something like this, because if they don't have it, the DLC is just gonna return it, but it's gonna make the town look like we weren't paying any attention.
Yeah, let me find out.
Well, you're looking at access, you want us to skip on down to four?
I didn't catch that.
I said, well, Dave is waiting and checking on that, you want us to skip down and do four?
I think that'd be great. What, you want to, this is just advice, right? I don't think we even vote on these. This is information to the board that the town clerk issued permits for special events as we authorized her to do within the past year or so, so.
So we're good there, right?
Good there, yeah.
Stopkins, can I ask the question I asked you earlier today?
Bailey, go for it, yeah.
I just wanted this to become part of the minutes of the meeting. I did get a call from a Brandon citizen that, on Friday night, that had looked at this liquor control and was wondering how we could be approving on the 14th, something for Red Clover from the 12th. And I explained to him about that Sue has the authority to approve these. And he was questioning the legality of that and whether that was really the case of the law. So I would like to throw the question forward one last time, just to be sure, that we had received input from the legal cities and towns, et cetera, that our town clerk has the authority to issue these permits and then for us to bless them at a later date. So if that's how this came to being, I would like that to be made into the minutes and affirmed, so that it is part of the minutes that I can refer anyone to.
Dave, does that sound like the correct, the correct history or the correct background of what we did there?
Yeah, I'd have to look it up from the minutes, I don't remember word for word what we, how we came to. I thought it was statutory that the clerk could do that, but I would definitely have to look back on minutes for that one.
Would you mind doing that just between now and the next meeting, so that, you know, you can refresh us all? I think we all have a memory of discussing it, but we don't all have a recollection of, you know, on what hinge we were hanging this particular door. Did you hear back from Sue?
Yeah.
All right, so let's, I would move to approve the third-class liquor license. And I would suggest that the town clerk double-check all the supporting documentation before she submits it to DLC.
Second.
There's a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, any abstentions? The ayes have it. Item five.
Motion to adjourn.
Coolidge moves to adjourn, second from, second from Wyman, not debatable. All in favor of adjourning at 7:57, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Okay, so we're all set, all we have to do.